Yeah, they have.
Seems like the old days, they had to use their radios and call dispatch.
And you guys have them.
Well, that's how we grew up, so we're not used to all this fancy stuff.
Well, that's good.
It's kind of like my computer that I don't care.
That's good.
We can go run a ticket.
Oh, hand written.
How much money is your share on this?
Oh, you should need that.
He went to the... Okay. But he went outside because this one probably doesn't flush.
It should, it can work.
We have water?
They don't have water.
For a moment. We did.
I should hope you went outside of the outside bathroom.
He did.
How did just outside, how do the people in somebody know that the fridge will boil water? I just sent out the I N info.
Or go back over some system.
Right, go back over our notification system, plus so.
I just told Ashley.
And I contacted Angela. I contacted Ashley.
I told her.
She told everybody?
I contacted Ashley, or Angela, she's gonna put it on the website for us. So if someone goes to that.
What happened to that roll call thing where they used to call?
Prior to my house, I was probably wondering what was going on.
You might, I just did the I N info, it took place in Ohio, so.
They tell the business issue?
Well, they're on it. They're on the I N info.
I'm on it.
I'm not on it.
You're not?
No, you know how to do it.
Sign up online?
Sign up online.
You get a text message.
Maybe you gotta put that on the front.
My question is that we're not going to lunch, correct?
I don't know.
I mean, there's no.
Not here, and there's no restroom facilities, you're probably called by no.
Well, there's no way.
Mayor, you don't know anything about it.
Can't prepare the food.
Pointing at you.
Well.
Yes. I don't think that's the issue. It's washing the dishes and restrooms.
It's the health issue, yeah.
We have water, we have tea made, I mean, we have ice.
Porter of Florida.
The problem we don't have is that we don't have a restroom facility. They're gonna shut the water down, we don't have a restroom facility.
I think it hasn't shut all of it, no.
And you said it shut down well, too, about twenty-nine.
And that's why we have water there still somewhat.
Oh, better than. Yeah, okay, the cleaning guy was out there dumping trash? I didn't know it was the cleaning guy, so. I was being your investigator.
So you're getting introduced?
Yes, he said, he said that you have water in your building?
Mm-hmm.
You know that? Okay, they're trying to clean it up.
Oh, good.
Trying to mop it up, but.
Yeah, it was more.
What happened?
Toilet just all over into my office.
Something broke?
We don't know if it's pushed back, it came through, or something broke in the toilet.
In the restroom?
Yes. Chief had.
To load stuff?
It was in the back, I don't know, so.
Something.
All the way up into my office.
You can't test it because you can't turn the water on.
That's right.
Okay, we're live. Thank you, Dan.
So everybody knows?
Totally. Yeah, the three ways to tell people, telephone, telegram, and tell Ashley.
Tell Ashley. I asked him if you had his number, and he said, no, he's got, you've got his boss's number, but he's over there right now trying to clean it up. And I was trying to take a picture, it was licensed plate number, because I thought he was.
Dumping trash?
Yeah, I didn't know he was eligible to dump trash.
Oh, we gotta take pictures of license plates.
Those conspiracy theories.
Did you say something white in there, or were they bumbling?
This is broadcast, if you don't.
Yep.
Yep. Hey, Deborah, did it laugh?
It's mine.
Did I ask him?
Okay.
Hey, did you? Everybody, you can know about our issues now, you're calling them. Did you?
We're not gonna open, but Laura's coming down to pick up your menu, we're gonna get it done.
So if you have to.
So we'll be able to have the chicken and roast. If you guys wanna do that, that's what we'll do.
There you wanna do. I might get some water today, I know they're actually get some water. Have to get some water to flush come out, so we're ending up now.
I mean, Larry's.
Yeah, but I don't.
So that's two hours.
I don't think Larry's.
Yes, just order it. I think.
Hold on a second, let me make.
Yeah, we can't have it.
My sister said she was happy.
We'll go, we'll get, we'll get.
No, just run water through the closet.
I have a redneck.
Yeah, there you go. Well, she has downtown gas, so she has five doors in the house.
Oh, we lost that again. We're gonna start with our.
Probably the closest side to you.
Slow down. You're going five places on four days alone, yeah?
I have fifteen. There wasn't the next.
I thought it was gonna count two.
We started. I can't so far.
Do you have any way to carry from?
I have twelve. Let me give you that, so we're missing two.
How many you got?
And then if they've got another order, so that's thirteen, that's still.
We're missing two.
Christie, did you put one in?
So, call roll?
Well, I think Laura's coming down.
And you have Larry? There's fourteen. Oh, that's yours.
So we got four.
I gave Larry.
Yeah, I just put him there.
Okay, I think they have enough.
I told myself to get, to get through the.
Can I ask a question about the project, what are the projects on?
Yeah.
So we only did thirty percent of our.
I think, I could be wrong, don't hold me on that, but I think it was, I think that's what we did. Name art. Okay.
Were cameras on or was it not in?
No, the audio's on on the camera, but I have, I do this separate also, another audio. Okay, we're back on. We can call it.
Okay, we're gonna reconvene at eleven oh three A M.
I'm sorry, I think it's.
Okay, so we were, we were discussing police, um, is there any?
Yeah, I have one more question. It's line two hundred and twenty-two, special equipment. I don't see the emergency generator for the police department. Today's a good example of why you might need one. And I think we should try and find some money to at least keep the police department running. And then we should also find money for the pumps and the lift stations, so they get a generator in each place, so we don't have a humanitarian disaster after a couple of days we can count.
Okay, so. That's, that's an excellent point. Um, at the end, we'll go, when we go over capital, we'll address the, we'll address the pumps. The generators, let me see, Larry's got it in his. Okay. We need to do this after.
So that probably has to be in questions in different places.
Yeah, I'm not sure if Larry has any other equipment.
See, I thought that was a capital issue.
Could also be an operation, just buy one generator for the police department.
Yes, sir.
We have generators now, we don't need cans.
Don't have enough.
We don't, we don't even, I bet you they haven't touched in years.
That's not good.
We don't need them.
If they're gasoline, that's extreme, but you're not doing.
We have. Well, we're by Lyons Field, look at the one set number there.
Yeah.
You know, you know how the power, there's probably diesel.
That's probably diesel.
Diesel or natural gas?
Diesel.
Yeah.
If they're diesel.
And we talked about this in capital, yeah, let's make it a point to do it, but let's keep moving on.
And it applies to a bunch of different.
And when we get to equipment, if we decide which one to put on, next time we connect, we need some proper, appropriate equipment. Okay, anything else on police?
Ma'am?
Anything else on police, anyone to discuss? So, um, let's go to the library.
Okay, we're gonna hear it in this.
Yes, sir, so. I just, I don't know, I burn, I can't find it again.
Please.
I don't see the library. Oh, there it is.
I have one question. Office supply is. For the library, line one thirty-nine.
Okay.
Why did it go to a thousand?
I'm using mine, because that's all I wrote on my question. I'm sorry, was I?
Yes, service.
That was before, we had library, we formed it as a court, but we did it the other way around. Very good question.
I got the back one, too. Just share.
I got it. Took care of her.
There we go. Okay, everybody have a thing? So, library, uh, we are increasing the budget by five thousand seven seventy-two. That is salary. But mostly.
We're setting number out?
We cut back last year.
What's the matter?
He's laughing at me, because I was on the library board.
Yeah?
No, I'm not laughing at it, it's just what you mentioned, salary.
What's up, and I should stop with you.
What can I say? I, I, like I said, I was on the library board, and I, the library is. It's not serving the citizens, it's serving the region, it's not serving us. We are giving free fax service, V P S.
Internet.
Internet to people who are not from the city, that's all.
Which, you can't do that.
You can't? That's a fine.
You're being charged for fax, and topics.
Okay, one at a time, please.
And we're also a regional library, to my understanding, is one of these came up two years ago.
Really?
And we have, we have to serve the areas outside.
Why?
So we have to give some stuff away.
Yeah, my understanding is that the unit bought up two years ago, but.
But why? How much, and I don't have a library, why do, why do we have a regional library?
You can't ask anybody where they're from when they come to the door, I mean, it's gotta be open to the public. We have a better, it has something to do with our grants.
We don't need the grant. Being, being a government entity also.
Okay, so, this is, this is a discussion for another day, let's stick to the library items as far as the money. And I agree with you, Phil.
I just rate the salary increase. This is really salary increase, we have, we have the open position for the library, this is just sort of, this, this line the city administrator, and when you come to the assistant city administrator, line item, those, those are, that's a budget item, so there's some flexibility in hiring. We are having a difficult time finding a qualified librarian for that position, so we just, we just need a little bit of.
So we're gonna go up a hundred twenty-nine percent, is what you're telling us?
What, what line do you want?
Uh, line one twenty-four.
But that's over the estimated cost this year, since we haven't had that position.
That's correct.
Yes.
It's seventy-three.
Yeah.
But that's a lot.
Oh, actually, one thirty-three.
One thirty-three eighty-one.
That's eight thousand dollars, and the only reason we need them.
Let me, let me say this, okay, just, just about, give me just a second, and, and understand this. You know, just like last year, we had to raise the minimum for the police department, because we can't give anybody, because other departments are paying more. The same thing with all of these things, everything goes up. I, I understand the thinking, it's difficult for me, being a business owner, seeing that what, we have to raise everything, but we have to, or we just don't get qualified people. If we don't, and I mean this in the kindest ways, we don't get our head out of the sand and understand that we have to pay the good people. All we turn into being is a farming place for other cities around us to hire people, and pay them just a little more, and take them away. So we have to be a place that we want good people to come to, not come here to polish up their resumes and move on. Does that make sense to everybody? That's, that's my opinion of it, because I have to deal with this all the time. With after being mortal, we're not gonna keep people.
We just, we walk a fine line there.
Yeah.
We have not, I doubt if we have anyone who has left because of the salary problem. I'd like to know a name of anybody that's.
I'm not gonna tell you names, but I know that that's a fact.
Well, I'd like to know, I mean, we have a right to know who left because of salary. Those are personnel issues. They are.
Those are personnel issues.
Well, the librarian, my understanding is persistent description doesn't need to be as tight as it is, because we need a master's degree, that's. We don't need grants, the library's not being utilized. It's not being utilized, they're doing food bank things, they're doing blood draws, there's nothing. I, I was, I sat in the library for days when I was on the library board, and no one came in. The only people, like I said, that came in were people that used the fax and internet, they did not use books, that were paying eighty-one thousand for a master's degree, so they can get grants for books. And the library board, or the library friends, got the Microsoft grant, which takes care of everything. Librarian has nothing to do with it. So, if, if it meets with your appropriate, is, we've got to, in my opinion, we need to move forward, I'm getting a librarian. And then sometime when we get a little more caught up, we have a discussion with council, and the direction they want the library to go. I would agree, because I don't think that's clear, um, to anybody on this point, what, what we wanna do with the library, so, but we do need to get, we, we need to get some, someone in there.
So currently, we have nobody?
We have our.
Look near to Jerry, bro, she's taking care of it.
Okay. We have a vacant librarian, so that eighty-one thousand dollars actually covers two positions. A librarian, that we're asking for master's degree or bachelor's degree, and then the other one is a library assistant. And because we're open, basically to the public, forty-five hours a week, we really need to have staff open before and after, so that we can open the vaults and do the cash. I'll be administrative, or so. We have two full-time positions, and then we have basically another forty-eight hours on average for part-time people, so that, our goal is really to have at least two people on site at all times.
An assistant and a librarian.
Right, and then some part-time positions. So the salary total is for how many positions? Two full-time, and?
Two and a half.
How many part-time? Uh, there's a work on one, one. Two full, one part? No, no, it's, it's a little over one full-time position as a part-time, so think of it as forty-eight hours, and a regular full-time position is forty. So you would say that there's three point one full-time equivalents. And that covers when people are sick, or vacation, and those sorts of things, when they have other things that are not there. And the part-time people are, because I know there's other people in there that. There's volunteers. There's some volunteers, and they're sporadic, and you can't always count on it, but they're tremendous. Yeah, they are, they've got huge backup of all of them. They're, we do, it's a, it's a great resource.
Now, how many hours, you said forty-eight hours, it's open a week?
About forty-five.
Forty-five hours? So Saturday and Sunday?
They're open on Saturdays.
Yeah, we'll put on Saturdays, but.
And as far as coverage, like she said, we want to have at least two people in the building, two staff at all times, for security and other reasons. Um, but also, I guess, who's taking, we have an interim, our assistant library is acting as interim library, librarian at this time, but Mary Jo is, is helping, has kind of taken over, supervising that position. Here's pulling sap where we can cover these things. Uh, line one fifty-one, tech share ban, what is that? You want me to talk about it, or do you want to talk about it, Mary Jo?
One fifty-one, tech share again.
We have a sharing, um, it's a sharing program with other libraries, do you want it? Yeah, it's the interim library loans, and so, uh, anybody who has a library card could say, I'd like this book, and if we don't have it in our library, we reach out to other libraries, and they will send us the book, and then we in turn send it to our patrons, and vice versa. So if somebody in another city needs a book, and we happen to have it, we wrap it up, and we send it through the tech share ban, and they send it over. Do we have numbers as to the, the need for this? How many interim library loans do we get? Uh, I can't pin up, I have, we have that number available. Okay. And, and it's a great resource, because what it does for us is it means that we don't have to have as many books on the shelf. So perhaps we don't have the right books on the shelf. And that's possible, but it's hard to say what somebody might want, and so what we're doing is actually opening our doors and making our shelf bigger. Well, I agree, but I, is it possible to find out exactly? I can't. If there's a trend to what these. Well, it's also a, a way to not have to purchase books. No, no, I agree, but it could be our selection of books could be, so I'm just asking for maybe some sort of, to see if there's a trend. Um, chamber commerce, why would that be in there, or why was it? I don't know why it was, but apparently that was only for one year, and now it's no longer.
What number?
Line one fifty-four. It was in two fourteen, two fifteen, and then it's out.
I can take it.
I can take it.
Oh. No, uh, the, the chamber commerce used to be over at the library, that was part of our building.
Oh.
Until they got their building, uh, went over to Steinbach House, and that was their rental.
I got you.
Uh, and so now they have their own building, that's why.
But this is. But not a revenue.
Uh, it was part of a deal that they did with the library years ago, did help fund the library, and it was kind of like.
So what we paid them?
They did.
And the webpage, one sixty-one, what is, that's out? So what was that, why is it there? That was moved, I'm assuming the webpage, any, any. Does that mean they don't do it anymore?
No, she does, she does, she, uh. The library used to have their own webpage, and they don't have it.
Oh, okay, so that's gone.
She also helps manage it, too.
She does it, do the webpage?
She does.
She does help us.
She manages the webpage.
She manages the webpage, not the information officer.
Well, that is the information officer.
Oh, so our librarian is our information officer?
They're part of it, yes.
Is that the?
Part of the job.
Part of the job.
Hey, we're getting blocked there, let's.
I'm sorry, but that's a salary. That's a salary, yeah. The last one, one sixty-five, special activities, are these, is this like overtime for the blood banks, and the food bank, and all that stuff, what is that? One sixty-five.
It might be part of the camps.
Yeah, I think it's, I think it's part of the camps and the special things, the camp program. And who decides those, the board? Right now, they, well, right now, we're just continuing the ones that we've had the cash, and that's not really the board, the, the advisory board certainly have input on it. But that, um, is a decision between the library and the administration.
Oh, we got you there.
Okay, all right, I'm finished.
I got one quick one.
Okay.
When we're talking about this tech share man service, in this day and age, we don't read books online anymore? I mean, I'm not a book reader, so I would.
It's, it's a very heated debate between people that want to pick up a book.
Are the purists really wanting to pick up a book?
I, I've ordered several books to do that, with, I'm a big book reader.
I do, I do, I have tried transferring over to read them on iPad, I can't do it.
I can't either.
I've tried enough, so, I just.
Can I not like to read?
Well, and I don't do this thing too well, either. That's why we're asking for hard copies, because we're trying to not kill all the trees in the Amazon, with a sword.
I just have one, one comment, as the new library advisor board begins on, I'm still learning a lot about the library, but I, one thing I've already learned is that Mary Jo is doing a lot of work. Let's keep that library running, and I like to compliment you.
Thank you, Mary Jo.
I think you're doing a great job.
Yeah.
It's not, thank you, man.
Yeah, just something to think, you know, we talked about stamp, we talked about salaries, how many people you think that, other than the clerks and stuff that run the city, how many people you think we have? They're in this room, there's three, you know, there's Larry, Mary Jo, Jerry, and Deborah, these are, that's it. I mean, we have the other, you know, staff that are, that do a good job, but that's it, that's all we have, we've cut a lot of people out. That's it. I mean, we're, we're down to bare bones people, we've gotta add some, but that's all we got.
I wanna say, Laura's been a work contributor for.
Yes, yes.
We have quite a record.
Well, that's not, that's our fault. Why, we had this problem all of a sudden. Look in it, Jackson, this, this handle, I can't guess it. Our city has not increased in size. Something's wrong, we need to re-talk our organization, maybe some people are doing things that aren't supposed to, like code enforcement with the police department. We just need to, I think it all, the whole thing needs to be discussed. And I agree she's doing a good job, but she shouldn't be doing that job.
Just stop there.
All right.
That's Mike, huh?
Put it right on.
Anything else on library? Okay, so let's go to the. Should be your next little page. Thank you. Before we start, how many? We have one person. Chris, why are you in this court? Liz Haas is the administrator, she's the clerk, so it's actually run by the judge in the process here, basically, I'm other, or, I'm the, I'm director of the board, in my department.
So that's Liz, we've met her before, but anyway, uh.
And we do not have the ticket.
Ma'am?
We do not have the ticket.
We'll help you out with that, honey. You stay out of this.
And then we have the judge in the process. So that's, this clerk is the one that's having the issues with the backup of the board? Yes, that's what I guess. And she's not city employed, she is a city, she is a city employee, so she's adding to this one, for this court?
She's the one in our.
She's the one, so one judge and one clerk, so we have this, the, in the salaries, that is just the clerk, because the judge in the process, the, the judge is, is paid.
By the county?
No, the judge is paid out of the contract labor, or.
Oh.
Oh, out of the general fund?
Two twenty-nine.
So the judge is contract?
Two twenty-nine.
Yeah, two twenty-nine, that line, I'm sorry, he is under sal, he is a salary clerk, he's a part-time, he's considered part-time, part-time, and then the salary is the clerk's salary. That's correct. And then down, two forty-nine is the city prosecutor, he's a contract.
Who's, who's the judge, sir?
Kate's, Tom Kate's.
Tom?
It's the Biden.
So, as you can see, we have, we're decreasing the budget for. So as you can see, we have, we're decreasing the budget for, that's basically the part-time, we're eliminating part-time, we haven't used that. Basically, that was moved from the part-time salary down to the, so it's basically, just moving around in prior year, that's why. And then this, I think the city prosecutor, the reason that went down is because the, I think it's just over budgeted.
Which one, 249? Well, it was over last year and so part of that may have been because they were going to have possibly more court cases, it just depends on the trials, only if someone needs it and then that's eventually extends.
Not a prosecutor. And so I, this year I budgeted on historical.
So, so when Officer Fisher serves a warrant, is this where they go, no, this is not where they go?
Originates from here and it goes back to your. Originates from there, yeah.
Originates from here?
Right, and then the money went back into, it's a warrant, went back into the income, the revenues.
So basically, municipal court, when he does his thing warrants, he submits it to court, the warrant officer submits it to court.
This court.
This court, and says, when we clear this warrant, she processes it and gets it to the judge and prosecutor and they do the, they decide, clear it out.
But there's no contact with the county?
To do what?
Well, I'm just asking.
No.
So this is, this is inside, right here, okay.
So it's something we need to work at to help with the warrant situation? Yeah, like I said, with the four of us, the chief, the mayor and I and Fisher need to sit down and figure out what the issues are and sort it out and then pull it down and see, and then pull the judge and prosecutor out and that's all.
Well, there's a learning curve, right? And it wasn't, it wasn't happening before for whatever reason.
Does he find people enough?
Does he?
Find them?
Fisher could.
Find them enough?
Oh, find them.
Does he judge, give big enough judgments?
Well, the problem with that, Phil, is once we issue the citation, it becomes the state of Texas's case and we have no say so in that, so that's the difference.
But don't we set the fees as part of the budget, just in the fees?
Well, we do, but most of those are set by the state and they can uncharge what we totally can charge.
And the judge can change that.
Well, we have always had one year, one, each year a warrant roundup, now you have someone that's actively going out and looking for someone all the time, so it will probably, it will definitely increase because of the fact that, you know, they're on.
More persistent?
Oh, you don't, you don't want Fisher looking for, he will find you, trust me.
Oh, so that, that makes sense though, so even if the judgments were kind of whatever, we do have this new.
Yes.
Would you say, would you say when, when the judge can change that number?
He can reduce the fine.
Why would you do that?
Go up to a second.
I ain't got no money.
It depends on their, their history and it depends on other things.
You may need to agree with the traffic stuff, I've seen, tell people, okay, you got a dollar fine, you're guilty, but I'm not really getting.
Maybe if he liked you.
It's not bad, it's just, I mean, it just depends on the circumstances, you know, sometimes these officers' observations don't coincide with the judge's, I think it's fair game, so.
Yeah.
Yeah.
It needs some work.
229 and 248. Well, I don't think, you're wrong enough.
Okay.
What's that now, Paul?
I just noticed we had duplicates, community, municipal court judge, 229 and 248, I just know.
One, one zero.
I need to, I need to remember that, I think they were, they were contract, they didn't, there's in the.
Contract services.
Oh, so there are different categories. What line?
Number 248.
That's a contract. Yeah, is, yeah.
It's holding the spot for the year prior.
Oh, I see.
Yeah, but one sign first to get rid of that one.
What's that mean?
Where is it?
P.
On 220, I would, this is P category.
Oh, that's, that's how we, we sort it when we require.
It's a sorter, so they have.
I'll give this to you.
Oh, okay.
So this is how we, how we get this to. So that's why they're different. It's just for us. Okay. That's basically our, so, so these are my work papers, this is exactly, this is really not meant for this type of thing, but because we wanted to have everything.
I like it.
And see exactly how, how we did, this is my work paper, so that's why it's not really, it's a little bit.
No, no excusing, excuse necessary.
We never sustain this, this testing.
Well, that's because I picked this together, so.
Hey, reducing the budget.
All right, moving on to.
Community development or do we only go to this court? Okay, so there's this. Hey, here's your big one, please. Why am I picking on this? This is my side. That's me, I can't.
Let's see that you are a senior, I'm just making sure you have it.
And we don't want a way to reduce our, I agree, I have figured out, I think.
We used to, CSBS.
This is the best, I have to say.
CSBS Association, that's our, yeah, we have a board here.
This is still palatable, Jerry. Compared to last year, thank you. Oh my God, it's a good one.
And beauty of it is it's showtime, because you're on the spreadsheet, you can change the number right there in front of everybody and change the total, so everybody's.
That's nice, I have, that would be nice to have that, see that we had all.
I've got a screen.
Probably 25 grand.
Yeah.
I've got a screen and a projector if you want to go there.
Who's, we have screen projectors standing up there, I hate screen projectors, I hate C, I have stigmatism and some.
It will eventually have to go to LCD screens of some type, years from now, but we can't.
That's our another console.
Yeah. I would like to request a 70-inch smart screen for my office, please.
There you go.
I probably have one.
Okay, so.
In your barn.
Community development.
Yep. This is Laura?
This is Laura, so, we're proposing an increase to a budget of 23,000 and that is mostly city engineer.
I'm sorry, so this is one person we're talking about, contracted service?
Community development.
So that's one person in contract services?
No, contract labor is, is going to be, I'm sorry, I said it here, Laura, she, she knows.
Sorry, I didn't want to.
No, no.
So contracted services is our primarily, every now and then there's like a hundred dollars here and there for other contracted services, but the bulk of that is our Bureau Veritas charges, we contract with a third-party plan review or inspection service, that's where that money comes from, that, that line item is always directly correlated to our permit activity because the way we contracted Bureau Veritas, it's based on the valuation of the projects that come through.
What about numbers?
So it is.
To reduce.
Yes. That one. And if you'll notice on your revenue page, not, you don't have to switch back and forth, but the way our fees are set up, this number should always be right about 40% of what those are, because, because of the way they bill us, their bill is always 40% of what we collect, so there's always a profit margin, so even, I say that because it is extremely dependent on how much permitting activity we have, so I think this is a conservative number that Jerry and I talked about, but if it goes up, our revenue will also go up, if it goes down, our revenue will also go down, so they always mirror each other as they move.
I'm sorry, this way I can look at 60,000, remember at least last year, we paid 66,000 and this one's a little bit looking at historical, it was hard to budget because if you see in 2014, it was 8, 1346, 1634, 1766, so you can see it's all in good place, you can't really do a historical average, you can't, you don't know what's in there, so we just had to.
We have a lot of stimulation in new subdivisions and if we don't do that again this year, it's going to fly out.
So, and, and there's, there's a chance that this is going to go over budget, so if you're going to have revenue, if your revenue's going to go.
To take care of it.
Yeah, to take care of it, so you're, so.
So 286, the building inspector is no longer here?
That's correct.
And that duty is done by?
Bureau Veritas.
Bureau Veritas, which is, which line?
283.
The one we just talked about.
That is actually Veritas, not actual contract.
Or.
We contract, yeah, we contracted Veritas to do that one, so that's why it's considered a contract. So that includes building inspection.
Plan review.
Sorry?
Planner view and inspection, so the, the construction plans, they're processed in, in my office and then I send them to Bureau Veritas and they see them, so the permits are issued, Bureau Veritas, it's the name of the company that we contract with for planner view inspections.
And where is that?
Their main office is in Fort Worth, but the inspectors work from their home offices, so our primary inspectors come, depends from Curbin, in, in the general area, we have about three inspectors that are our primary inspectors, the benefit of using Bureau Veritas, they have a next-day turnaround for inspection services.
So everything's very timely?
It's, it's extremely timely utilizing that because they have a large staff.
They do condo.
They do condo, they have vine, lacoste.
Lacoste, so they have somebody here every day.
Yeah.
Ain't nobody around here that can provide this service for us.
No.
Really?
Do you remember what we used to do?
No.
I should have.
I did.
I remember a building inspector who couldn't climb stairs.
And he drove, and he drove to the project and he got it and. You're good.
Oh, he was a windshield inspector, yes.
So line 280, the mapping, I thought we had a council meeting where the engineers are doing the mapping, what does that mean?
So the, so there's mapping and then there's equipment and the inventory, those kind of go hand in hand, what that is, is for our internal mapping, so not for that one, but there's some in the different offices for development maps, for city limits maps, things like that, those are generated out of our office, so we have our, our GIS program.
You told me location.
That wasn't even before.
So we, we just got a GIS program last year, that was, last year was our first year.
Same city your county has?
Um, yes, it, we got the same program, they just upgraded theirs, so we mirrored theirs so that they.
Those got that water pipeline map they were talking about?
So some of, some of the mapping, like the water line mapping and the sewer mapping, those are done by the engineers ultimately, when those projects are done, ideally they would send my department the shape files and those would be input into our data, so it's really a data management software that allows us to have a lot of different information.
But you would have to chase that, right, if you don't, I mean, I'd be remembered to chase that, I guess, if you don't get it.
Yeah, so I collect it as I can, it's a time-consuming process, but it's very beneficial for.
I can see that, yeah.
So you made the map that shows where all the water valves are.
I don't, that's, that's our city engineer, but.
That's public works.
But once, once they make those maps, then what we can do is input it into our system and say someone comes in and has a specific property that they're looking at.
Like a water bank, bro?
Well, or for development purposes, so they come in and say, hey, I'm interested in this property for this development, what are my utilities look like, and so we would, given that all the information's in there, we can go to that specific property and say, your zoning is X, you're in the city limits, your utilities are here, here, there, so it, the topography, the floodplain mapping, it, it makes it very property project specific, whereas before the GIS software, we would go to all of those separate maps and just flip back and forth, so it's a much more efficient way to do that.
But it's only as good as the information that you input into.
Yes, sir. So, it's, it's a work in progress, it's getting better every time we put more information into it, but it's, so some of our previous staff had more experience in the GIS software, so it's, it's a learning process, I'm learning how to utilize that program.
Got a question too.
Go ahead.
City engineer, same guy, same company?
He just contracted a new Michael sign.
Yeah, so you see where it was moved out of this into, so we don't have anything budgeted.
I see that. So that's not Russell per sign?
No, he's just on the sewer wastewater claim.
He does have a sign right now.
I'm sorry?
He does have the sign right now.
Yeah, no, I know, they're not related, they're not same fathers, I know Michael and, they wrestle, right?
He told me to recuse us.
Oh, I can certainly see that, yeah. I like, I like Russell, that's why I'm asking the questions.
Their, their company did, did for the city engineering services.
Russell?
Yes.
That would be my.
Yes.
So those are zeroed out because they're city administrator.
Okay, so, so how was, I assume this is an increase of salary for you, and we have just completely dissolved the original community development, which included code enforcement and other stuff, so how have you been affected by the, by that?
You know, I think, I think a lot of that conversation would probably come in a personnel discussion, but just from a, a numbers perspective, there used to be a building official slash code enforcement officer, there was a director and then there was myself as the coordinator in the last budget cycle, two of those positions were eliminated, so most of those responsibilities except for the code enforcement, which went to the police department, are still in the department.
Does you have, do you guys work with her on code?
Absolutely, she calls all the time, can you get this, no problem, take care of it. We call on her for records and stuff.
I would say code enforcement, it's, it's amazing how much more is able to be enforced just having people with that.
And so it's a good test.
I mean, I think, I mean, that, that's a testament to them, what they do, but everything else is still.
And Nora and I had this conversation yesterday that I've got some ideas and a little restructuring to help use that.
So are we giving our community development that we, because I, I'll bring this up, because I have to mouth, but in the past, we had no clue what was going on with community development, it was like boom, all of a sudden there's a council meeting, we find out, this developer's coming in, this one's coming in, because of confidentiality of them, so number one, I don't understand confidentiality when we need to get a budget going, and number two, that's what you do, working with places like GoMedina and ours?
So, I'm sorry.
No, I just, I am trying to understand.
Sure, so a lot of the, the GoMedina and those in the economic development realm and that was part of the decision that's been.
Oh, that's gone.
So the, the, I don't want to be solution.
I have some ideas on that front too.
Is that going to be in here?
Well, you know, we.
There's a line of four to join, we have to pay our, I'm on the board of directors of GoMedina.
Okay.
There's, we have to pay, we have to pay our share of the fee to GoMedina, it is a very worthwhile.
And this is. It's advertising, right?
No.
Wait, what is that?
No, no, it's more an ad, go to the website, read about it, come to one of the meetings, I mean, they're, they're standing out, come to the meeting, the general industry meeting, it's to try to bring industry into.
Into law.
Where is this meeting held?
We meet in every city once, for, it's a, it's a great organization.
And what are our dues, are they in here?
I can't remember what the dues are and I think I did those.
Based on our population.
So I, I moved it, well, when we get down, when we get down to that amount of.
Okay, so there is a, we do have, okay, that'll be.
Now you've got to remember something too, as far as community development, Claudia was supposed to be working over there too.
Yeah, I know.
Her, her salary was.
I know, so I was trying to figure out, Claudia, an airport lady?
That's her.
Claudia is the airport lady.
You're us.
That's hard.
I don't do that for it.
Okay.
It's community development.
She's community development.
But she was, Claudia was economic.
Right, so once, once the businesses are, you know, brought into the fold of discussion, that's when they come and talk to me.
So economic is before the, economic development is the one that's. And that was Claudia and it's, and it's been good.
I don't think we got very much from it.
But we, right now, it's all here though, Linda, right now Linda, me, Laura, and Larry are the economic development people.
So can we get, I didn't know that, can we get information, what could we get from that? What can you share?
What from GoMedina?
No, from the economic, if they're the economic development people.
We need to talk about what we can and can't.
Share.
Share. That's a discussion we need to add.
It's not your purview at all, your after.
So I have, I mean, that's a very, like, that's a simple way to break it up, but a lot of it goes hand in hand, economic development, community development.
I'm not sure what your after is.
But you're wanting to know what developments are coming.
What information you want?
Well, if we wanted to do a budget and there's development coming, then we might end up needing water, street maintenance, roads, that has nothing to do with council.
So.
It has nothing to do with.
So they do it with the budget now.
No, but it's her position, is that in the position description for her to do these projections or say, we can treat this much water, I'm going to get that information for you later, blah, blah, blah. Is that adding to your duties?
So I need coordination of getting that information, but it's, that's a joint effort between all of staff.
So it's not something additional in your particular job description, now that we don't have Claudia?
No, no, so what, what happens is when development, when developers are interested in developing a property, they'll come into my office and, that's usually the first call, just to see what our ordinances are, what our utility locations are. But I, I don't generate the utility information, I ask for that from Public Works, so I act as a coordination.
And so it's adding to your job though?
Well, it's been part of my job description for the last five years.
Okay.
As far as the cost, is what you're saying?
But.
Like from a development?
Well, no, because in the past, it was always, what's mine and you know, whatever, who would do all that coordination, trade park, we'll make a deal with Trade Park for money and that kind of stuff.
That's still in my department.
That's your purview.
But it's, it's not, I can't make those decisions, ultimately, it's a council decision on those agreements, but it's.
It comes to us, we work and then we're going to get a proposal to council at the time that it can be disclosed. And that's where I'm going to, I'm going to get, we've got to get clear on what we can and can't.
And that's what we're operated in the past, is without.
A lot of times when you have a developer come talk to you, they don't even purchase property yet, so they're, they're looking at a business investment and, and you know, you don't want to be spreading that around because that.
No, I just mean, are we assist an efficient and effective way to have these people, I mean, in her primary duties, this additional gamble, I guess it would be by developer, I'm just asking, but is it an deeper?
Well, by the time it gets to her, she doesn't reach out and give these people, they call, so that's, I'm sorry, we've already done the reaching out.
You guys do the reaching out?
At this point, yeah, that's, that's, yeah, since we don't have Claudia anymore, then we would be reaching out to people and then we would say, okay, we have this person's come in, Laura, do your thing. But we could get developers calling us and then they call her directly and say, hey, I want to come into your city, and then she gets us all together and starts.
And we advertise for people to come here?
That's part of what, don't they?
Look, we're going to walk out of this, we should not be talking.
Okay, so that has nothing to do with your job and the increase is totally due to your duties as community developer?
It's just for operational, that's what this budget is, it's not.
No, no, but I'm asking a question, it's not affecting her with the closed down minus position.
That's all, that's a personnel.
Yeah, that's more than personnel.
All right.
So.
Yeah, it's all.
Let's move on.
Is there anything else? Okay, we're going to be developing this new duty, okay, this is a public service investment area, we'll try to do the best we can without very here, so we don't. It's also nicely, I'm just throwing everything.
I read, long enough that intelligent people are missing people.
Oh, good.
Massachusetts, you know, but it's really.
They're nice, geez.
We look at my.
I would know if you were at my desk.
I do.
How many people in public services? Okay, Mary Jo, how many people in public services, we've got the, we've got two.
Streets and grounds maintenance workers.
Sorry, I didn't hear.
Two, two streets and grounds maintenance workers.
And that's public service?
Oh, I'm sorry, you asked me how many?
How many employees in the department?
Four, and four, what are they? I apologize. They're all four, all four of them are streets and grounds maintenance workers.
Four guys, that's all we got?
This is for the mowing and for the street.
Yeah, the facilities. What does that mean, the street?
Uh, potholes.
Oh, there are potholes, yes.
So what, what we're going to do, as I said, it's not, it won't change the bottom line, but we're going to be moving two of the streets and grounds under parks. And then we'll still be doing the same, they'll be doing the mowing and the, basically, it'll be a facilities, parks and facilities, so they'll be, they'll be dealing with all the mowing, all the parks, all the, very the parks, all the facilities. All places, public works, yard, clean up where we're here, helping change light bulbs and all that, so that.
And this is apart from airport and the sports complex that's.
Well, the sports complex is included in that.
This is all part of the sports complex.
Even the, the sign box house.
Sign box house?
Sign box, the, the mowing of the out there to collect the, the, all the facilities on my city, this is, it's moving to parks, parks and facilities, basically.
We're going to merge it.
Sorry, we're not, we're not merging, we're leaving two in streets and, and we'll move two over to parks. So we'll have two people that'll be dedicated to streets and drainage, and then we'll have the other two dedicated mostly, now, there's a lot of possibility in the city, you have to have the tariff out, when we have to, but that's.
So that's, that's a future plan, I'll let someone put it here.
It just, it's, I'll, I'll be moving on, and I'll be, be doing special stuff, but. Bottom line of the project.
So say you think it's great, Mary Jo. So the increase is, that's more employees or?
Yes, oh, yes.
Oh, no, not in this department, as you told us.
This increase is because we increased the beginning rate from twelve fifty to thirteen dollars an hour and then to maintain, so we have the compression, we also move salaries for those two individuals.
They were making twelve fifty, did they do all that mowing on the?
The best of the business.
The rock in the street, the highway?
Yeah, so I, I'm sorry, I didn't know, so I know to talk to most of you about this, I mentioned it in the, in the council meeting, that part of this is a play plan where we have increased our minimum salary from twelve fifty to thirteen fifty.
Just those lower.
That's a minimum salary?
Twelve fifty.
Wow. We, I'm thirty, we've moved it to thirteen as our minimum, and, and we've just done it for those lower employees that we're losing. We have, we have fifteen percent of our staff we don't have, and the majority of that is those lower level employees.
Mary Jo, how many positions do you have posted that you can't even get any applications on?
Well, we're starting to get some applications, but we have about six positions.
Really?
Because nobody wants to work for that.
It's a low level one?
Yeah.
Wow.
We're not getting any, people aren't going to work for that.
But you don't have no compression in the pay scale?
We're, we're trying to address the compression, that's what's going in this lower range.
That was always the problem at school.
What was always the problem?
Compression in the salaries.
Oh.
Because depending on where you were on the pay scale, as far as how long you've been there or your performance, some people got three percent, some people didn't, depending on where you were on the salary, some of them got less. If you were there a long time, you didn't get near as much as if you started brand new, and so you have this compression in the middle of the scale typically.
It's a, sometimes, I'm sorry.
You're sorry?
No, I'm saying, I didn't mean to interrupt, he's absolutely right, that's exactly, and sometimes what happens is you get, there's a point in the middle where these, these employees start to be exempt employees, they don't make overtime, and then, and then you start compressing it so close that you start making, these employees at the lower levels start making so much overtime, they're making more than they're.
That's your problem. Well, a two, a two-year guy could possibly not make a lot less than a guy that's been there five or six years just because of the compression of salaries, and we always had that trouble at school. We get these guys in the middle of that scale or towards the end, they were disgruntled because of that, you know? But it was all, the way I was explained to, it was more about what does this position pay? You know, comparative in other markets, you know?
So it's not just the city, the school systems have the same.
Oh, we had it bad.
So are we?
We had it bad, I mean, it, it looked unjust, but they, they told me that that's the way, that's the way it is, it is.
So when you had, and what happens, I believe, and correct me if I'm wrong, when you, we can't get these lower level workers to work here, and everybody else will work in the other people ahead, and they're leaving.
We need to fix it, potholes particularly.
Well, I think, and this was a suggestion I made, was we have some key people that are very good, try to get those, you know, try to get a couple more of those, pay a little more, whatever it takes to get those, and when you have all these projects we're doing, such as potholes, you know, cleaning the streets, cleaning the gutters, which we don't do.
Oh, my gosh, really?
We don't, we don't.
No, we don't do it.
We used to.
Yeah.
Yeah, I suggested that we get a temp service and we hire whatever it takes for a week, ten people, whatever, and have these employees take the crew out for, and do all the patching and do all the cleanup, and then get rid of them, because they don't cough, they don't, they aren't, they aren't on our insurance, uh, they're, the temp company, uh, courtesy insurance is going to be cheaper. I think we need to work smart.
So that would be in our discussion, that positions and stuff, or?
No, that's something they can do without our input, I mean, that's, that's the city administrator and Public Works, that's in their, you know, I think that's a, because we didn't do a lot of the level up, we didn't do a lot of cleanup, so we could, you know, we could do, we just need to work smart, we could do this ourselves, town service.
Drainage issues?
Yes.
I mean, just in my area, you go to all the, where the drainage is supposed to go out the street, like in a cul-de-sac, there's, there's dirt piled up this high.
Oh, so that would be that?
Yes.
And that, if, if you go in there and skim all that out, however, skin steer, and I don't know how you do it.
Either that or you hire people, you can't hire people.
No, this makes sense, I mean.
It's, it's a, I think it's.
If you can find a temp company that'll provide that service.
You had gave the idea of driving through country buildings, a contractor with like fifteen people all over the place, and they don't work for them, they're a temp service that they got to bring those bodies out there to work.
So will that be presented in agenda or?
Well, so.
I don't know, it's, it's something that's just an idea the other day during a meeting that I presented and asked them to look into it.
I don't know, how do we fix that compression part?
We did adjust the compression in ranges one before by moving those individuals up into the range, so that we wouldn't have that compression. And to answer your question, no, it's not enough, but those are the most visible things, Claudia Young Rest, but what Mary Jo had. What Mary Jo had to look at when she was looking at what was she good is the compression issue, and where, you know, when we sit with all the, you know, everybody that, much higher, we would be getting into compression issue, we wouldn't have it going to the higher level, and so this fixes it? It makes it better.
It makes it better, let's see if we're getting, we're just not getting, you know, the same thing going to utility, not here, utilities, as far as replacing people, we have some, we have some key people early in this year, you know, retirement, other things, and we don't have any people coming in.
Water real tight, job market right now.
Look how long they have to look for wastewater treatment operator, nothing. All of them.
Took a breath out of my pot, I'm sorry.
Well, I'm ready.
But as far as that temp type of stuff, that would, the win on that to me would be, if it don't work, you just don't do it anymore. You know, it's not like you got to get rid of anybody.
It's not a commitment.
It's not a commitment.
It's a, we, we got to have a, an SOP to do it, I mean, you've got to, you've got to, for standard operating procedures.
So we have to act on it now?
No, we don't.
Oh, no.
I'm saying that if we, you go, right now, if you go hire ten people, fifteen people, ten people, and you want to want to do potholes, there's got to be a way of managing these people, okay?
Oh, sure.
So we take two city workers with them and they go do it, you know, and they're, they have to have a, a written, you know, operation of how they do it, you know, you just can't bring people that hang around and walk around the streets, you got to go organize.
You're going to make some policies.
Would this be the tree cutters too?
Absolutely.
So what do we need to do, because we've got that wastewater issue with the trees.
No, no, that's, no, that's.
That's different.
That's, that's working out.
So what do we need to do?
Nothing, let them, let them take care of it.
Yeah, we'll have to develop a plan and then, and then we can, whatever it is, I think, I think it should be by project, if we decide we're going to do the tree cutting, you know, cut down trees off the alleyway, Larry?
That's a more specialized area, I'm talking about cleaning, who was that guy that worked for the city government that rode a bicycle?
Jerry, he cleaned, Derek Slater.
He cleaned ditches, who was the other guy that they always were out the hardest workers we ever had?
Well, Jerry's the one that stands out in my mind.
They had him out there cleaning ditches, cleaning the streets, they were doing it all by himself, you know, but every day they were doing something.
So if we want to have somebody come out and clean the streets and we give Larry a fair amount of insurance, it's going to cost.
Oh, okay.
And if it's below, if it's within my sign range, we do it, if it's above that, we come to you and say, and.
Ah, okay.
And that's a project thing, if it's a budget, it's just when we come back, we budget, but we try to manage it, then I'll just try to, and then we'll.
We've got a question, line three twenty-seven. What's the finance of five hundred fifty thousand dollars? And we put it in the budget.
Okay, so, okay, I think that was a mistake, I think that should be five hundred thousand, the reason is.
Line two, two twenty-seven.
So the five hundred fifty this year, that's the four hundred eighty, I think, is what John approved for the, for the.
Forty.
Which is still.
With a percentage over.
Yeah, and then the, the remainder is for our general, the thing, the work that, that they're, the cost of the work, everything worth of being done. Next year, five hundred thousand dollars, there, we don't know the plan, we're putting five hundred thousand dollars as a placeholder for council to decide, or for, as general.
Change the number or kick it out or whatever.
Yeah, so it, it just depends on what.
You got a number in there.
Yeah.
No, I'm not.
Are we going to fix any streets next year or we just going to pour oil on the rock?
Huh?
Are we going to fix any streets next year or are we just going to pour oil on the rock?
I don't know.
I'd like to know that as part of the budget.
Well, that, I don't think that's a discussion right now, we got a number in there and when it comes to that time, we'll have, we'll have a budget, we'll have a. What do you want? Do you want to?
I want to know that we're going to spend some money fixing some streets, I have a lot of people in my district that say, when are you going to fix the streets? And we never say when we're going to fix the streets, I'm just asking, are we going to fix some broken streets next year?
I don't know.
When will we know?
When we have an agenda added and a group gets together and talks about it.
Do you want to take the number out?
No.
I'm, I'm asking, well, when that's a good number, I like the number, I just want to know, that's what we're going to do, we're fixing streets.
Somebody's going to have to prioritize which ones we do next.
What you do.
We have to study.
Then what are we going to do with them?
Yeah.
You know?
What's the capital out like on line three thirty-two?
That is, so, we talk, that we, that is for equipment, for. Now Larry's going to have to answer his question, but he gave. Um, now Larry's gonna have to answer this question, but he gave us this equipment list, and there's some items on here that are in extremely poor condition, like a dump truck and a, uh, a half ton extended cab, and those, I haven't, actually, I've got those to talk about later, but that's what those, that number is for, is for the.
Okay, capital out later?
Cap. We put the equipment in there too.
A hundred twenty thousand?
Okay, yeah, um, yeah, that, that's equipment and the capital out, it's for dump truck.
We get to Larry, he has the items that he wants.
We have this list?
Yes, definitely.
It's, uh, so basically, just, so when we talk about equipment, later on today, to let you know that that is, that's what this one twenty is, it's a backhoe, uh, a wheel loader, a dump truck, and a extended cab.
Hundred twenty thousand will buy all of that?
We're talking about leasing.
Oh.
Yeah.
We can't afford to buy, we need to lease. Is that what you got, maintenance?
That's why it's not in equipment purchases.
Right, if, if you, if you lease, you get maintenance, everything on. It's, we can't afford that, we need, we need to do it this way, if we're gonna do it, but they need equipment. That equipment is so old.
Then I have a backhoe in there.
It is old.
These are, what, I did, was, I just took.
Horrible.
I just isolated the things on his, uh, you know, on his list that he said.
We need no more.
For the insurance, sorry.
I just isolated the things on his list that he said were in poor condition, I didn't even address the fair and the, and the good. It was just, and what I'm saying, the dump truck is on its last legs, and so we just, um, just haven't addressed. So.
And that's another, that's another thing you wanna do, lease, dump truck.
Yes, I'll be.
We're trying to lease it there.
If you put purchase in there, it's gonna be in the millions, you know, if we lease them, people, and I'll tell you.
Lease them for a month, and then take them back?
No, it's, it's a two-year, three-year lease, or whatever they work out.
The lease purchase.
It was one of our contractors, I was talking to him one day at a meeting, and he said, he leases all this stuff. He says, he can't, you don't buy that stuff anymore, you lease it, he gets all the maintenance and everything in it, and he just turns it in, works the hell out, and turns it back in, and that's what we should do. You know, lease them, and, and we can get some most bang for the buck for us.
Is that numbers placeholder?
I like that term, placeholder.
What's that term?
Placehold.
Basically, just a much smaller, a, we wrote, we wrote the this.
What's the next item?
The thing else on.
Any other questions?
Services. Okay, let's move to parks and recreation. Have we been, um, you're doing?
There's only one.
One, this is the park supervisors, or not the RV host.
That's right.
Or his music.
There ends no salary for the RV.
He gets perks, we, this guy down there, you know, pay.
Place a note.
Place a note. Young man, so, we, we will do a longer one, right?
Like. We start first, then we push on.
Okay, so parks and recreation, if you look at your small sheet, it's, we're, uh, we're saying it's gonna increase about seventeen thousand, and that is for the janitorial, and the reason is that the janitorial, I'm gonna move on the, um.
Three sixty-one?
Yes. The three sixty, I said three sixty-one, yeah. We haven't budgeted, that's what, this is, this was the one area that we didn't budget on janitorial correctly. Um, the other ones were we, we got the new contract, we, we were within our budget, and then the, under our budget, and then, what did you call it? We have this ninety-seven inclusive one, that we voted on?
Yes.
Yes.
Ninety-two.
Yeah, so that's their portion, and that's what the, that's, I mean, basically, almost the whole entire increase can be attributed to that, and moving some, um, economic development funds, there, there are certain items in economic, but only economic development, we don't know why. We moved it into special activities, and that was, uh, more new, that wasn't been, um.
I believe that was for Castroville.
For Castroville.
I had to, I had to.
That good, but. And maybe the Zobina, that, that kind of thing, that maybe that increased there, but we absorbed some of that into the parks. So that, those two things can be major.
This is one employee.
And this is where we get to transfer those two streets and grounds, maybe to get some theater.
In the future, so right now it's one employee, but then it'll be three employees, and when I do develop, but yeah.
So we're gonna hire a parks and recreation guy, right?
Yes.
And we're prepared to spend forty-five thousand, or is that including the other guys?
No, that's what we, that's what, uh, two hundred thousand total.
Oh.
For the department.
Okay, for the department, yeah.
Yeah, forty-five is what we budgeted to hire a superintendent.
Okay.
And maybe a little less than that.
Right, depending on negotiations.
But that's what we're thinking.
And we already have that posted, right?
Yes, sir.
Any applications for us?
Really?
I know somebody called me, actually, about it. Three fifty-eight land rental, what do we rent? Land.
What number?
Three fifty-eight.
It's, um, I'm shooting, it's that eight sixty, eight, eighty-one sixty-one is for, I have to get back here, I forget, I know, I guess, but I'm sorry.
You know, that's what you're missing, all this.
Show money. Three sixty, uh, two, tree care. They're not taking any, or any trees alive, they're not taking care of bushes, not even weeds.
Where is that?
Yeah, three sixty-two.
At the park?
That's horrible, that's horrible, yeah, what is that, we need to.
There was a lot of tree care.
I think it's a circle of, what's four, I'm sorry?
Down at the, uh, our regional park, they came in and took up a lot of concrete.
Oh, so this is separate from the tree trimming they normally do for utilities?
Yes.
Yeah, they, they go to the parks, yeah, park, park.
So we have a special thing for the tree care every July?
Yeah, this is the liability, all the dead branches they have to go in, terrible once every spring.
So this is, this is a con, whether, it's a contracted service or not, we're doing this ourselves, right?
Yeah, so last year was a tree service that did it.
Yeah, I guess.
It's, you know, I'll tell you, I know of some that have been done.
Yeah.
At September Square, remember how all the trees were hanging down almost to the ground? They had to raise the canopy.
Oh, yeah.
So, that's expensive, I mean, that's expensive, and that, those are the type of things that they, is it gonna have to be done again this year?
Yeah, it's gotta, like, a few years.
They've got those track trees there that are constantly, you know, falling down, or.
Macaws are the world's worst.
Yeah, well, there's another one there, there's.
Ash trees.
Huh?
Cypress?
No, ash.
Ash, it's a joke.
We're the guys.
That's what everybody planted back in the fifties and sixties.
Yeah.
Grow fast.
They grow fast, and then they jump.
Uh, two sixty-three, maybe we should take the laundry machine out, put one of those big ones in, like Chief was talking about, I don't think we're making any money off, money off laundry. The lease is, lease and maintenance, two thousand something, for how many machines?
There's three washers and one dryer, if, if you think the people are not using them, which you obviously do, then you should put in bigger commercial ones, like they have at the laundry van, maybe we get crack to use it.
It's like, they'll shut our, our.
Put in the right stuff.
Yeah.
And that's just twelve thousand dollars that's going up the street.
I think it should be considered.
That's lieutenant tax, and we'll look into it, it's his department now, right?
Yeah.
We definitely have.
Oh, really?
Fire washers. We do?
I said, I hope we do.
Well, that may be.
Maybe you don't need three.
Yeah.
You put in a commercial one, so you get one load of washer, goes in one dryer, you take out two machines, and put in. If that's what people are going up the street to use.
You can also take out the clothes lines for the washing.
There's clothes lines?
There's clothes lines.
Are you serious?
Yeah. Yeah, they wash and they hang them up.
Oh, they're in my room?
They're gonna hang your towel.
Say, what's in the common area?
You don't have a clothesline at your house?
No, that's not a resident.
It's the worst.
I have a clothesline.
Should I tell my mother, have?
Yeah, that's all everybody has.
I've had a clothesline.
I guarantee my mom and dad had clotheslines.
For sure. Three sixty-seven lines, lines out completely, that park's horrible, and we need it for soccer.
Three sixty-seven line?
Three sixty-seven lines.
The line is worse, come on.
What about?
With the sets out.
Dude, whatever that is, is important to the, I don't know, I don't know what, I don't know where or what, but whatever they do, and lines, I'm assuming that, that all they do out there is the maintenance.
That's by the elementary school, correct?
Yes.
Yeah, and the softball, and I get lots of complaints about ants, they can't use it because the trail has cracks in it, softball bleachers are falling apart, and they pay for it, and.
Can't do nothing about the cracks unless you go to water.
Well, there's an irrigation line out there.
Yeah, it is.
It seems like all the money and time and expense is going to regional park, when this is a city park.
I agree with you.
And it's a city park that's important to residents.
They're done with that one.
It's not here, but you know, it seems to be that.
It's ignored.
If you got a billion gallons a day of water spare in those ponds, that's reusable for irrigation, why don't we lease a big water truck, and bring it down to Lions Park, and flood the park two or three times a week, with that water that we're getting ready to pump up the hill and give to somebody?
Yeah, really.
To use that water.
It's, it's, it's horrible, that park, and we've got a trailer park with these little kids that have nothing to do, the library's across the highway, hanging into the library, that's the only thing, they can't get to regional park either. So the only thing you have for these kids, besides tagging, is that park, which they can't use. They can't use, it's horrible, adults can't even go there.
It needs a playground.
It's horrible.
They need a playground?
It needs a playground. It's in the worst to do something there.
Oh, it is? Okay.
Private housing.
No, you're always so passionate about it.
We've been telling the city for years.
Todd, all the money for the parks goes to regional park, because these, these are underprivileged people over there.
They're getting done.
They get done.
You know, we've got the law right.
Because nobody, nobody, nobody says, hey, I know that we've raised, we raised, just to tell you this, we raised money to do, uh, Houston Square, and we got, just in donations, thirty-seven thousand to do the.
Fountain?
The fountain, and I'm trying to raise enough money to do the papers, but we're also, uh, raising money, the next one is Lions Field, that's the one, I told you that, uh, is Lions Field to do a playground.
Parks.
And Paul, Paul knows, there's land there that has been set aside for a.
Skate park.
A park.
At Lions?
Yes, there is.
Really?
Yes, and maybe it is some of that.
You know where they skate, at the post office?
Yeah.
Skaters work around the post office.
Oh, they're.
But they need some place to be, right?
That Lions Park is, 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 that's what we need to get these kids off the streets, because they can't go to the library, they can't, they can't get across the highway, we can't get across the highway to go to the library, so.
Push a button on hold.
Yeah.
I see, I see, who's that, I call him Jesus, this guy walks to your left, if that ain't Jesus, I don't know what it is.
What?
That guy, the lumber guy, that, that tall, tall thunder guy's over there, walks up and down the.
What's wrong with him?
When he crosses that highway, how many times a day?
Oh.
Every time I'm at that light, he's there.
Eugene Corrigan.
How many?
His name is Eugene.
No, that ain't Eugene, I know Eugene very well.
It's, this is Russell Corrigan.
He's relative, so, don't throw rocks at me.
Todd, he's my employee.
Is he really?
He is, he is the best employee I have.
Where does he live?
He lives, it's. He's a share heart, his brother was a share heart.
There he is.
Oh, you're talking about Eugene Corrigan?
No, no.
Really?
He's right across from Stacey Bifford, right over here.
Oh, my God, he's a relative.
What was, she just, she's one of your, no, he's adopted, but he is, he's a share heart, so you better be careful.
He looks like Jesus to me.
Nope, he's your relative.
Well, be gone, unless I'm up such a bad.
See, you related to everybody in town.
Oh, yeah, no doubt.
I'm sorry, Louis, seventy-two, that grounds maintenance has gone from, it used to be there, where is that gone?
Grounds maintenance?
Uh, park supervisor, it's Lions, right, it, it's, there were a lot of duplicates in this. Oh, so that's, yeah, it's, yeah, so that's one thing that I'm slowly trying to move that way on. Park improvements, line three seven five, he's in charge of those, he she, yes, so he decides?
Well, it's not, it's not I, it's, I mean, um, he's a rent man, that's for, you know.
Yeah, so where's the board in, so the board?
The board would suggest certain things that would happen, and then it's like.
So we're doing five thousand in every park, not just regional park?
Maybe.
That's not just.
That's his mom? She's a.
That's for all of them.
The.
And special activities for all the parks, not just region, that's why I mean, three seventy.
Yeah, the special activities, yeah, that was basically where I moved some economic development, um, things in there, that's toward Castroville.
And landscaping, we just said, we've done it, it's not fair, and I'll say it and I'll shut up, but this parks guy needs to take care of all the parks, not just region.
Okay, so, all right, right now, we're gonna take care of this, you wanna dedicate money to Lions Field?
Well, is that just, I mean, a proportional amount?
That's what y'all want.
It's, then, right now's the time it happens.
But it needs to be a proportional park taken from regional park.
I would like to see the park before I would dedicate money to it, I mean, I'm, I'm all on board with y'all about.
Please go out there, walk.
What do you think, what, I wanna hear from her.
My, my observation has been, ever since, ever since we created the Parks and Recreation Board, the other parks in town have suffered, and the regional park has benefited. I think we need to relook at how you allocate money, and how you allocate things, because I believe that Lions Park is being ignored. I think it's never gonna be treated fairly the way we have the board structured now, and, and maybe we need separate boards and separate budgets. I'd like to see money put in the budget specifically for Lions Park, and because that would be spent there.
Thank you.
Well, the, the other thing is, we have a development code that, that, for instance, at, uh, West Time Village, they were, they set aside two, what were essentially two or three months worth of land there as a park, and all we do is poll.
It'll never get built, as long as we have this Parks and Recs board that just focuses on, right, the regional parks.
So that's the problem.
I think it is.
Well, I don't know, because I.
But he's the board representative, what do you think, Todd?
I just got on that thing, don't get me in the place like that. I ain't been to a meeting, the first one I went to, they said, we don't have a, we don't have a quorum.
Go.
And then, and then we did.
Correct.
The second one, they never had an agenda posted, so we never had a meeting, so don't frown on me about this thing.
You get to that Lions Park, it's terrible.
But I'm all for putting a portion of that towards Lions Park, I just feel like, oh, all the parks.
Let me, let me say this, all right, but here's the thing, understand this, is the direction of this council for the budgeting, or specifically, there'd be a proportionate amount of the budget allocated to Lions, Lions Field.
Of course, a fair, a fair amount, I don't know how you come up with a fair, because.
An adequate.
Because the regional park's considerably bigger than Lions Park.
It's not my fault.
But I mean, if you're looking at it from a money standpoint, don't you put more money in regional park than you do.
Okay, let her speak here.
I'm sorry, I think we should ask the Parks and Rec Department to put all of the park stuff in one hat, break it out by percentage, and tell us what percent goes, what percent of each park, and then I would recommend that the budget should be proportionately divvy amongst those different entities, so that every park gets treated roughly the same. So that every park gets treated roughly the same.
Would you, would you guys put a nominal amount in the budget that is to go toward a playground over there, equipment?
How much is our budget for the park?
Okay, so here's, here's what we're looking at. There's not a lot of money in parks right now and we can do that, we're not gonna be able to get it done for the next, more of this budget, because we need to get somebody in there that's gonna do this analysis, but, but really what you're talking about is five.
What's the thousand dollars?
Line.
Line six?
Three seventy-five.
Okay.
Three seventy-five?
Yeah, so, so grounds maintenance, you know.
Maybe we could do some capital improvement projects when we get to that point. And put it, put it, just put it, give me something to start with, I know I've got money raised to do something.
Can we take miscellaneous off and just say park improvements, the Lions Park by it on three seventy?
This is all maintenance, let's leave this alone. Then when you get, when you get the capital improvements, let's, let's, as, and it's, if you can give me a nominal amount, it'll help. You know, I think, I think, and I'm just speaking.
I'm writing.
I think we're talking like about twenty-five grand or something, the same thing we did at.
Or regular?
That's what we're talking about, trying to get. And we have some money raised for it and I have commitments from other people to do it. But I need to finish Houston Square first, because it's obvious nothing's gonna happen there unless I do it, so.
The problem seems, in my opinion, the problem is that the, the Parks and Recreation Board, Advisory Board, looks at the revenue makers for the city and they try to optimize, and I can't fault them for that.
No.
They're trying to make money for the city. The heart's in the right place, but the policy part belongs to the city council. We're supposed to set the policy, they're supposed to implement. I would like to see the policy being that the Parks and Recreation's available money should be distributed on an equitable basis to all of the parks.
So that's a policy?
That would be a policy. Now, we leave it up to them to give us advice on how to execute the policy, but, but the policy ought to be very clear, that the money should get distributed to all the parks on an equitable basis.
That's exactly what we, I just said earlier, you know, is to allocate a proportionate amount to that park. And you can, yeah, okay, I think we're all on the same page. Let's, let's move on to dirt capital. We'll talk about it. I think we should break for lunch. Yeah. Deborah, is that how you arrange it? We're gonna break for lunch at twelve twenty-nine. We're supposed to be there, that's right, let's move it.
I have one more question, I'm sorry. Say, can you put in a park, what's that?
Probably love and goggles.
What is it?
What number is that?
Taking a question at the park.
What number?
Three seventy-four, um, not sure exactly what that is, it's.
That is a pretty good number.
It is, the safety, what does that mean?
About three hundred fifty dollars.
Moving guards?
Safety.
Gotta be for the playgrounds.
People who do the trails maintenance over there in the park, you know, they have to have gloves, they have to have gloves.
That's it.
All kinds of safety problems.
Just walk, you see one of those.
Yes, sir.